Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and to our audience wherever you are in Nigeria and across the world. Welcome to this Arise Presidential Town Hall series on education, healthcare, poverty and human capital. This is the third of a number of town halls to come as we approach the 2023 elections in less than three months' time. I'm Charles Anyegulu and joining me from our Abuja studios in a moment is Adesuwa Omoruan. This town hall series is organized in collaboration with the Centre for Democracy and Development and our other partners including Premium Times, the Nigerian Guild of Editors, the Nigerian Union of Journalists, the Guardian Newspapers, Daily Trust Newspapers, Leadership Newspapers, the Cable Newspaper, New Telegraph Newspapers, Vanguard Newspapers, The Sun Newspapers, Blueprint and Nigerian Fact Checkers Coalition. This evening is an opportunity for presidential candidates to share their views and engage with the public on topics of concern to Nigerians. Three presidential candidates are here with us this evening, introduced in alphabetical order as follows. His Excellency Peter Obi of the Labour Party, LP; His Excellency Rabiu Moussa Kwanquaso of the New Nigeria People's Party, NNPP; and His Excellency Waziri Attiku Abubaka of the People's Democratic Party, the PDP. And before we go any further, let me bring in my colleague in Abuja, Adesuwa Omoruan. And I'm told that she's not quite ready yet. The town hall series will have a panel of 12 interviewers, of which two are from the Centre for Democracy and Development and civil society partners. Ten journalists here with us this evening in Abuja are the following journalists: Dr. Bridget Onochie of The Guardian; George Tywo of The Daily Trust; Onwuka Nzechi of New Telegraph; Sony Daniel of Vanguard; Diop Kazar Shibayan of The Cable; Sunday Issua of Leadership; Ihan Ocho Wosu of The Sun; Adalana Adepaba of The Punch; and Ine Ekhot, Premium Times and representing the Centre for Democracy and Development, we have Idiath Hassan. But before we get started this evening, an exceedingly important evening, let's run through the general house rules. This is a town hall meeting and not a debate. Therefore, there are to be no rebuttals from the candidates and no clapping or cheering from the audience going forward. As candidates speak, we ask that other candidates are respectful with no interruptions. You'll be allowed 25 guests and supporters who will not be allowed to ask questions. And of course, the audience is in Abuja whilst we're here with the candidates in Lagos. We ask that you are respectful of timekeeping rules. There shall be a timekeeper who will alert you when you have 30 seconds to go and at the end of the time allotted to each response. Today, Premium Times Nigeria will be fact-checking claims made by the presidential candidates during the first half of this town hall, while the Nigerian Fact Checkers Coalition, NFCC, which brings together fact-checking organizations in the country, including Africa Check, CJID Daily Trust, Dubawa, Facts Matter NG, ICIR, The Cable Fact Check Hub, the Insider Digital Africa Research Lab, Premium Times and CDD. They'll all be fact-checking the second half of this town hall. Candidates are advised to be conscious of the claims they make in the course of the conversation. A group photograph of all candidates will take place at the end of the program. And without further ado, let's get started. Now, the first question is going to go in alphabetical order as we did when we did the introductions to Mr. Peter Obi. Thank you very much indeed for joining us. Nigeria has failed to meet the poverty-busting targets that it set for itself, with 133 million Nigerians, representing 63% of the populace, now officially thrown into destitution according to the National Bureau of Statistics. How do you intend to deal with poverty and to contain what is clearly a crisis of privation, penury and manifest destitution, which seems to be getting worse, not better? And you've got three minutes to answer that question.
Well, out of the three minutes, well, for me, let me start by thanking Arise and the other parties that are involved in this third series of the town hall meetings. And I thank the other presidential candidates as well for participating. This increases and makes our democracy better and shows our commitment and respect for those who want to serve. Tonight's town hall meeting issues centers on health, education, human capital and poverty, though human capital encompasses health and education. And of course, lack of it is a direct consequence of poverty. And I believe that the issues we are discussing is the foundation of the Human Development Index, which again is measured on three critical areas of life expectancy, where Nigeria is 55 years, while the global average is 72.8. And of course, in human capital, the last measure that I know published by World Bank in 2018 were 152 over 157. And poverty, you've seen, you mentioned it yourself, were 133. And cumulatively, the Human Development Index were 153 over 191. And this situation, like you've mentioned, is unacceptable. It calls for one thing, the great escape, as mentioned by Nobel Prize winner in 2015 in economics, Angus Dutton of Princeton. The difference between rich and poor nation is health and education. So how do you tackle this? You tackle it by investing in this critical area. And that's what I would do if I had the opportunity of serving. Invest in this critical area. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Peter Obi. And let me come to you, Rabiu Kwanquaso. You have three minutes to answer the same question and presumably you don't need me to repeat the question.
Yes, thank you very much, Charles. Let me join my brother in thanking all those who have taken the time to organize this town hall meeting. Straight to the point of poverty. The United Nations and the World Bank believe that for any government to pull out people from poverty, that certainly entails five major things. The issue of housing, the issue of education, the issue of health. Very, very important and of course, the job opportunities and so on. So these are things that in the course of my experience, especially in Kanu, we had an opportunity to pull out so many people from poverty by way of education mainly, right from primary, secondary to tertiary level. Education has always been key to us, is number one, number two, number three on our agenda. And of course, now we have an issue of insecurity, which is also very important. Our situation in Nigeria whereby people cannot go to the farm, people cannot buy and sell from point B to point C because of insecurity and so on. All these issues aggravated the issue of poverty in this country. And I'm even surprised that we're talking of 133 million people. If you talk to roadside economists, people who do it practically, not necessarily the MBS, will always tell you that the number is much more than 133 million. But in any case, our responsibility is to ensure that there is security in this country. And that is why we decided to increase the number of the military from our 250 to about 1 million. And that our police from about 230,000 to about 1 million also. And of course, we increased the number of other security agencies, increased the training and retraining, provide them with equipments and all what it takes, especially the ICT and so on, to ensure that we square every square meter in this country. That put together was of course, the provision of job opportunities based on, for example, the lack of electricity that we have in this country, the issue of infrastructure that must be improved, the quality and the type of education in our tertiary institutions and of course, down to primary education. Plus, construction in almost all the sectors ranging from roads to housing and so on and so forth. And that was why in Kanu, we had an opportunity to construct three major cities in four years, Konkosiya, Amarna and Bandrau. We spent billions, over about 40 billion naira out of resources because it's important to know that our policy is not to go and borrow money.
I have to say you're virtually out of time now, so you've got 15 seconds to round.
Yes, of course, the issue of corruption and all other things that are associated to issues like drugs and so on must be fought frontally. So that at the end of the day, we can have our society, our young men and women to go around and to have job opportunities and of course, to have access to food, to have access to good health, to have access to education and so on and so forth.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Kwanquaso. And let me come to you, Waziri Attiku Abubaka, with the same question. How do you intend to deal with poverty?
Can you give me the question again?
Yes, Nigeria has failed to meet the poverty-busting targets that it set for itself with 133 million Nigerians, representing 63% of the populace, now officially thrown into destitution. That's according to the National Bureau of Statistics. How do you intend to deal with poverty, which seems to be getting worse, not better?
Thank you, Charles. We have got all the statistics, both internationally and locally. The most important thing is emphasized by both Peter and Rabiu, fundamentally is education. We have to get our kids educated and not educated only, but rightly educated. And then by the time you educate them, you find that they become readily available to the private sector, which should be actually the engine of growth. The private sector is the driver of prosperity in any given nation. The responsibility of the public sector, that is the government, is to see how we can incentivize the private sector to really make use of these talented young men and women who will be produced through our educational reform. And educational reform must be in such a way that they are able to cope, you know, with current educational trends, that is technology, innovation and so on and so forth. But as a developing country, Nigeria's mainstay as far as employment is concerned is agriculture. We must revolutionize our agricultural sector to make sure that it employs as many young men and women as possible. And the only way you can do that is to make sure that incentives are given again to the private sector to expand, you know, the agricultural base of the country. As a public sector, as a government, that's the best way you can, you know, ensure that prosperity spreads as much as possible. And the second employer of labor in our economy is the small and medium enterprises. And that's why we propose to set aside a very, very substantial amount of money so that the small and medium enterprises can be funded. In other words, making our young men and women to assess those funds, you know, to be able to set up businesses and therefore, as much as possible, reduce, you know, the rate of our poverty is very, very important.
Thank you very much indeed, Waziri Attiku Abubaka. And before him, of course, Rabiu Kwanquaso and Peter Obi. You're watching a special Town Hall Series live here on Arise News. Let me take you now to Abuja and to my colleague, Adesuwa Omoruan, who's going to ask the next question. And she will of course, keep engaged with the candidates, so do stay attentive. Adesuwa, over to you.
Thank you, Charles. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Abuja studios. Dear candidates, you have two minutes each to answer this next question. The federal government has blamed the subnationals, that is the state government, for the state of poverty in Nigeria. Should you become the next president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, what will you do to reverse this trend of stifling of local government funds, which has contributed to the level of poverty and insecurity in the country? Let me begin with the candidate for the NNPP. With the candidate for the NNPP.
Yes, coincidentally, I was governor for eight years in Kanu. And I was very conversant with the difficulties and issues involved with handling the local government funds. In our own opinion, in NNPP, there is need for us to look at the constitution as it is today so that provisions can be made whereby the local government authorities can get their money direct from the federal allocation. Now, even though we had a similar case in the past and the local government did not handle the resources, but it is the intention of our government not only to ensure that those monies are being sent to the local governments, but we'll get a lot of ways of ensuring that local governments and of course, even states are being advised in terms of working together to ensure that every single naira that is being given out of the treasury at national level are being utilized effectively. We will encourage local governments to do the right thing by way of doing their projects and programs. And also because of the failure that we have seen in government over the years, that is why in our blueprint, we decided to create the CPRC, the Community Participation and Reorientation Committees, that will work at wards level. And we are now in the process of enlightening the public to understand what we mean because in Kanu, we were able to do it very effectively and successfully. We have those committees in all the 8,809 wards that we have in this country. And the resources will be channeled from federal government straight to those wards, of course, through the necessary legislation at the national level. So we are going to where we realize that there are issues, especially now that most governors, if not all of them, of course, are stifling the local governments in their states, which shouldn't be acceptable to any responsible government. So we have a very robust arrangement whereby we are going to work not only with the local governments in many ways because we are serving the same people, whether we are in the same party or not. We believe that the people of this country should be given a good governance at all levels of state, local government and at national level. We will continue to encourage the local government and states to ensure that education is given priority and of course, other areas that will help the people, the infrastructure, the agriculture and so on and so forth are given due priority. And of course, the issue of electricity and so on to ensure that we have opportunity for our young men and women to have job opportunities across the country. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much indeed. And Adesuwa, please continue because, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I was speaking to the candidate of the Labour Party, Mr. Peter Obi, please. Yes, I was speaking to the candidate of the Labour Party, yes. Yes.
The state governments that are, the subnationals are causing poverty. Because if you look at what is today causing the poverty level that we have, you first have to look at the issue of security, which is federal government, issue of physical viability and everything, which is federal government. Most of the things that are causing it today reside on the purview of federal government. I am going to deal with it on issue of managing local government resources. I managed it for eight years and what I always say, people, go and see how we manage to work with the state and local government to be able to effectively use the resources in area of education, in area of pharmaceutical care and other development areas. And that is all we will continue. But the major cause of poverty in Nigeria is issues that reside with federal government. It's the federal government that will revise the productivity by first, if country is properly secured, you return confidence in investors, the locals like this. If you bring appropriate measures to have conducive environment, a greater environment that investors can come in and everything. So I think it resides on federal government.
Right, okay. Thank you very much indeed. And I think Adesuwa wants the same question to be directed to you, Waziri Attiku Abubaka.
Thank you very much. Again, when I assumed office as vice president in 1999, what was handed over to me was local government administration. And when it was handed over to me, I gave instructions to the accountant general that all local government allocations should be transferred to the local government straight. After implementing that policy for nine months, the governors protested and said, that's not constitutional. So we looked at the constitution and they said there was supposed to be a joint account at the state level where local government funds should be transferred. And also the state government was supposed to also put in a certain percentage of their revenue into that account. And then it was then moved to that joint account. So local governments now started getting their funding through the state's joint accounts. And that is where we have problems. Because in that process, some state governments started, you know, taking part of the local government finances. Some said they were going to run universities, which the state government set up. Some said local government should contribute to certain projects, you know, in the states. And therefore, at the end of the day, the funds were being depleted and the local governments were left with no funding until, in fact, it has gone to virtually nothing now. Most importantly, we must look at the laws, particularly the constitution, and see how we can make these local governments both independent as far as their financial transactions or revenues are concerned and also how we can protect, you know, their interests if funds are transferred from the federal government. I think that is a major flaw, you know, in our laws as far as local government finances are concerned.
Thank you very much indeed for that and also for ending dead on time there. I'm told that my colleague in Abuja, Adesuwa Omoruan, is having some connection problems, perhaps having difficulty hearing us whilst we're restoring that line. And I'm told that that line is now restored, so let's return to Adesuwa Omoruan in Abuja.
Thank you very much, Charles. We do have in our Abuja studios seasoned journalists who are representing our partners today in the third of the series of the Town Hall series as Nigeria counts down to another crucial election come 2023. Now, some of those panel members, we have the opportunity to ask the candidates some questions on poverty, which we have dwelt upon for quite some time now. And I would like to call the first member of that panel, representative of The Guardian newspaper, Dr. Bridget Onochie.
Thank you very much. Yeah, my question goes to the presidential candidate of Labour Party, Mr. Peter Obi. Sir, you just explained how you were able to work harmoniously with the local government areas to ensure even development in the states. If elected into office as the president, how do you intend to ensure that state governors toe your path so that there will be even development? I ask this because if you succeed as a federal, but states remain backward, the buck will still fall on your table. Thank you. Table. Thank you.
And let me call on the representative of The Cable, Sunday Issua. Of The Cable.
All right.
Of The Cable.
My name is Sunday Issua from Leadership Newspaper. My question is for all the presidential candidates. And the question is, it concerns education. Because I don't want to talk about how the government have been nor the researches that are taking place in the Nigerian universities. I want to talk about the issue of strike, where ASU, which was formed in 1978, have gone for strike action for more than 33 times. And in these 33 times, in an average, it has been there for, the strikes have lasted for more than six months, you know. Now, if you become president, I'm talking about all the presidential candidate, how are you going to address this issue of ASU strike? Are you going to privatize the unions or are you going to adhere to the 2009 agreement, you know, that the federal government entered with ASU? Thank you.
May I remind our seasoned journalists and our partners to follow the prompt? We are dealing with poverty at this time. Thank you so much from the leadership. I move to The Cable, he is Diop Kazar Shibaya. He represents The Cable.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Hello, I have. So I have two questions. Okay, one question. Okay, one question is this. Before the National Assembly, there is an executive bill to institutionalize SEPS. Before we had SEPS, we had, we had SHOPPEY. Now, these are programs that have been designed to address poverty. If you become, if you get into office, and that's everybody, what, are you going to sustain this? Do you think it has addressed poverty? And if no, what, what will you do? What will your program be? How will you design your program? Tell us about that.
Okay. Right, I think there are quite a series of rather confusing questions, I have to say. And that's not really entirely fair on the candidates here. So let's focus on the last question because we haven't got to education yet. Let's focus on the last question, which had to do with poverty. And I think that question was directed at you, Peter Obi. And I think that question was directed at you, P. Toby. And I think there was also another question before that because it got a little bit, as I said, confusing from Dr. Onochie about how you were going to deal with the states if you become president. Because I mean, there's a division between, you know, states and the federal government. The federal government has its powers, the states has its powers. So pick and choose which you want to answer first.
Quite frankly, for any meaningful development, any meaningful thing, the federal government must work seamlessly with the subnational. In fact, whatever, one of the things that have made us to fail in Nigerian development goals is that we were not able to streamline that process into our development agenda, starting from the local, subnational and national. So for us to have any meaningful development, that is why even in the constitution, there's what you call economic council, which means every month, which is supposed to be the states and federal, because they are supposed to move simultaneously and seamlessly in development. And that I can assure you, I will do, I've said it that I will be at the center ensuring that you communicate and deal with all the states. On issue of education and ASU, first is that tertiary education. The most critical.
I think, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's a question that will come later. I think they're just kind of through it. I want to get through with all the poverty questions and then we'll change to education and healthcare and all the rest of it.
On issue of the poverty one, which is SEPS and SHOPPY, which is mentioned, SEPS and SHOPPY before and everything. Quite frankly, to deal with issue of poverty, I believe this government is involved a lot. The issue of dealing with poverty, the government physical position have to be clearly designed and spelled out while execution should be directed. For example, if we're talking about agriculture, we don't need to start the programs running with the governments. We have Bank of Agriculture. I will resuscitate the Bank of Agriculture in Kaduna and ensure that they in turn support the farmers when it comes to issue of ensuring access to funding to deal with that issue. Other agencies that are designed that will deal with issue of ensuring either issue to do with crops, issue to do with land management, to do, there's a lot you need to do. If there's no one process, issue of dealing with, for example, issue of dealing with small, medium, micro, small businesses. All you need to do is to resuscitate, we used to have all the micro banks, community banks and everything.
You've got about 30 seconds.
And make them the fortune. If you make them the fortune effectively, having a percentage of our lending go to this particular sector and then physical support.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, Mr. Peter Obi. And let me come to you, Rabiu Kwankwezo, to answer the same questions. And I don't know, but you, you, people say that the presidential candidates have remarkable memories. Your memory is probably better than mine, but hopefully you do remember what the questions were.
Now, you see, we, on the issue of state and local government relationship, which the lady mentioned, we had a model, which I believe is the best model. You see, in Kano, every month, we sit down, when our Commissioner for Finance comes back to the state, we sit down with the local governments. We look at, we looked at all the issues in the state and of course, the state means the entire local government. And we agree on a particular or particular projects. Now, first and foremost, we agree that we have to pay salaries. We agree that we have to do all other necessary things in general terms, state and local governments. And then we look at other issues like roads, like water supply, like electricity and so on and so forth. And that was when we agreed that each local government should have five kilometer of dualized roads within the local government headquarters with the street lights, drainage, with walkways and so on and so forth. And of course, we, we handle them as joint project. And local governments will go to the councillors and everybody to sit down and agree and then come back with all the documents that the local governments have accepted to work together with us. And that's why we had our five kilometer roads in all the local government headquarters with all the facilities. That's why, together with the local governments, we are able to provide turbines in two, to our dams, Chala Gorge and Tiga Dams, that Tiga Dam that we had in Kano.
You've got about 30 seconds, sir.
Almost completed. And that's why we selected so many other projects together with the local governments. And we work harmoniously, we're paying salaries, everything, pension, all the requirements that were with the government. Together with them, we worked peacefully and with a lot of success. And that's why you often hear that our strength is mainly in Kano for those who don't know that our strength is all over the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Kwankwezo. And let me come to you, Waziri Atiku Abubaka, to answer the same set of questions.
Thank you very much. We have been on this poverty issue since the commencement of this town hall meeting. I think Nigeria should be fair to PDP. Because when we were in power, the poverty rate is not as high as this. We initiated the needs and seats. And that tremendously reduced our poverty rate. We were not, you know, having this kind of, you know, astronomical, you know, poverty rate as we have today. So that's why I said Nigeria should be fair to PDP for definitely reducing poverty in this country. And I think those programs should be sustained. Even though the present administration tried, you know, to copy, you know, or to continue with what we started, but unfortunately, they have not been able to do rather. The thing has gotten out of control, you know, in the administration. So I believe the program initiated by the PDP government, which brought down poverty rate, which also made Nigeria the largest economy in Africa, should be sustained. And I intend to sustain, you know, those policies to make sure that poverty rate is considerably reduced to the barest minimum as far as the next administration is concerned, if I have the opportunity.
And what about the issue of the local governments, which Adesuwa had asked about originally?
Well, I have explained that we must look at our constitution. You know, I explained to you that when we came into office, local government administration was in the office of the Vice President. And for nine months, I was remitting, you know, allocation direct to the local governments. And later on, the governor said that was unconstitutional. And then we came back to joint accounts and we reversed to joint accounts. And since we reversed to the joint account, we now started having problems with the local government financing and also the management of the local government generally. Because if the local governments are starved of funds by a number of deductions being made by the state government, then of course, they will not be able to perform anything. So our laws have to be looked into to make sure that if we want complete independence for the local governments, we give them complete independence and we don't, when we stop interfering with their funding. So I think that should be looked at. I mean, it is not something you sit down here and said, I'm going to do X, Y, Z. Because it involves legislation. And legislation involves the National Assembly, involve the state assemblies. There is a fundamental flaw, you know, in our legislation as far as local government financing is concerned.
Right, I don't know if we gave you the opportunity to answer that question, Mr. Kwankwezo. But if we didn't, then I would ask you that question and whether you agree that there is, the constitution is very clear that there is a division of work between the federal government, the state government and the local government. Because the states, the diversion of funds that should accrue to the local governments is something that concerns a lot of people here. That, as you know, local governments are supposed to be closest to the people. Their constitutional functions include everything from security to the redistribution of wealth at the grassroots level. If you were president, how will you reverse this diversion of local government funds, which is clearly contributing to poverty and insecurity?
Yes, I think that was the first question that was being tackled. You see, we were faced with those issues when I was in government. But the issue of the constitutional amendment is very critical. It's very important under these circumstances so that state and local governments can have adequate resources to handle their issues. But that's when I said that there was need also for the federal government really to sit down with all the stakeholders, state governors and everybody, whether same party or not, we are serving the same people. So that at the end of the day, every level of government, the federal, the state and even the, the local governments can do their own version of the constitutional responsibilities. So we believe in NNPP that there should be finances that should go direct instead of the joint account that we see today to the local governments so that they can function effectively together with the federal government and of course, the state governments.
Thank you very much indeed. We have considerably more clarity on that issue. Let me come to you, Mr. Peter Obi. We're going to change gears now and move on to another topic. With everything from poverty, culture, economic upheaval, climate change and insecurity pushing the education crisis in Nigeria to the brink, unprecedented action is needed to dramatically improve education and get millions of children back into school, especially in northern Nigeria. What will you do as president to reverse the growing number of out of school children in this country? And you've got two minutes to answer that question.
Well, you have to look at what we have been able to do so far in education at the federal and state level. But talking about the federal, federal level now, our investment in education is low compared to even comparable countries. If you look at, let me just use 2016 to date, six years to 2021. Our investment, our total investment budget in education at the federal level is about three trillion, 3.6 trillion, just three, 2 trillion, 550 billion. That's our investment for six years. That is not up to South African, which is second biggest economy, or about the same for one year. In 2020, their budget for education was 380 billion rands. If you convert these two, you'll see the difference. So you need to invest more. And if you look at their own, it was about between 14 and 16%. All throughout the six years, our budget is not up to 10% in education. There's no way that can happen with the pool of people have out of school. For me, Nigeria can design their budget differently. If we work hard in this country, I believe Nigeria can, if they block all revenues, be able to get a revenue of about 15 trillion annually. And if they are borrowing, not throwing away to subsidy and other areas and curtailing cost of governance, they borrow about maybe another 10 trillion. You need about 25 trillion budget to start with. And 10% of that should go to education and 10% to the other areas which we're going to come into. We're going to invest in education. We're going to do whatever is possible to ensure that we pull those millions of children and show they get basic education, which is the most important.
Okay, and that was dead on time again. Thank you very much indeed. And just to mention that we are going to come back to both of you, Mr. Kwankwezo and Mr. Abubaka, with this question. But I'm going to go over to Abuja now and bring back, okay. I'm told that they're not quite ready in Abuja. So let me come to you, Waziri Atiku Abubaka, with that same question. What will you do as president to reverse the growing number of out of school children in this country?
I tried to do that when I was the Vice President, particularly with the northern states. I commissioned a special study, which was made by a committee headed by Professor Adam Ubike, a foremost educationist, you know, in Amadou Bello University. And as a result of that, we produced a handbook on how the northern states can catch up as far as education is concerned. It requires more investment. Like Peter said, we are not investing enough in education. And because it particularly concerned the northern states, I called all the northern governors in Kaduna and gave them a copy of the report and how to implement it. I think not one single governor implemented the report. But then we don't have a way to force them to implement it because they are sub regional, you know, entities who have their own authority in the constitution. Our own was just to advise them. So it requires real, really additional funding and infrastructure to be able to bring up the numbers as far as the northern states are concerned and therefore, provide a productive population. Because all is talked of about poverty, unemployment and so on and so forth. Once you increase investment in education and you provide the right type of education, you are going to solve a poverty issue.
Thank you very much indeed. And let me come to you, Mr. Rabiu Kwankwezo, to also answer that question. We need dramatic improvement, as I'm sure you know, and you've mentioned that already. Dramatic improvement to education in this country, getting millions of children back into school, especially in northern Nigeria. What will you do as president to reverse the growing number of out of school children in this country?
Thank you very much. Let me just comment on what Waziri said about being fairness to PDP. I believe that Nigerians are very fair to PDP over the years. I only want to remind him that he led us out of PDP in 2013, 14 because PDP was very bad at that particular time. And we went and formed APC. Unfortunately, APC to many people today is not as good as we expected, me and him. And at the end of the day, we came back to the very PDP that we decided to leave. To us, and I'm sure to many Nigerians, especially the PDP people, they believe that yes, PDP was bad, but APC is very bad. And many people believe that PDP plus APC is what we have seen today in this country, the issues that we are discussing. Anyway, that is just by the way. But the issue of education, we believe that more investment should be made in education. We will encourage private people to set up facilities, primary, secondary and tertiary. I have to thank Waziri, he has an institution, university, which is a very good thing. The only thing is that he should try and make the fees and so on much lower so that our team supporters, P-Nigerians, as many as possible can join the university. So we are going to do whatever it takes to ensure that education, right from the issue that was raised, I thought we will be given opportunity to talk about ASU. But I want to say.
We will talk about that.
Okay.
You've got about 10 seconds to round off.
We will do all what it takes really to ensure that each and every child in this country will be given the opportunity to go to school at all levels. And that's why in our manifesto, we decided to say that all forms.
I'm really sorry to interrupt you, sir, but we are out of time. You did speak about the PDP originally at the outset, rather than focusing on the issue. But you have made the point, so. With all due apologies, I'm afraid I have to interrupt you. But thank you very much indeed. And you will get the chance to talk about the ASU strike as you wanted later in the program. But let me take you to Abuja and to my colleague, Adesuwa Omoruan, who has. But let me take you to Abuja and to my colleague, Adesuwa Omoruwon, who has some questions for the candidates. Adesuwa.
Thank you very much, Charles. Well, let's talk about that ASU that everyone has been eager to talk about tonight. The industrial action in the tertiary institutions in Nigeria have become almost as constant as the others. Should you become the next president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, what deliberate actions would you take to ensure that this will become a thing of the past? May I begin with the candidate of the People's Democratic Party, Mr. Atiku Abubaka?
Their salary structure and areas of their salary. The government must be prepared to invest more in running of our universities. And then we should also avoid a bottleneck in getting these funds to the right places. I mean, to the universities. At the current system or current structure, there is a bottleneck. When government releases funding for the universities, it goes to another agency of the government. And that agency of the government now stifles the universities from getting this funding. Forget whether the funding is sufficient or not. I give you an example. When I was vice president, I visited a few foreign missions. I found that they were not receiving their salaries and allowances for months. They were not paying rents and they were in blackouts and so on and so forth. So I came back. I called the Minister of Finance then. I said, look, how do you transfer this money to these foreign missions? They said, it goes through the ministry. I said, okay, let's ask each embassy to submit their own budget to us. And each embassy submitted their budget. After it was approved, we now started wiring money straight to the embassies. And then we cut off the bureaucracy, the bottleneck at the ministry. Even though the ministry people didn't like it, but that was the right thing to do. And then now the foreign embassy started. Now there is also a bottleneck as far as, you know, funding the universities are concerned. And unless we remove that bottleneck, even as insufficient funding as we provide, we will not get to them in time. Or what may get to them may not be the right amount of money. I think these are structural issues that I believe I can deal with forthwith. I mean, if I have the opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, Atiku Abubaka. And that same question goes to you, Mr. Peter Obi. If you become president of Nigeria, how will you resolve these perennial strikes by ASU?
Well, as governor of Anambra State, I do have a very long, you know, issues with ASU. And if you look at it today, when the ASU was on strike, the last strike, Anambra State University was among the few universities that were not on strike. And they said it was because of what had, the way handled and what they did with them in the past that made them to be like that. But overall, the funding of tertiary institution in Nigeria needs to be restructured. It need to bring a lot of mix where government will contribute. We have some deductions from private sector, who needs this products, who contribute and bringing show of loans and everything. It's not something that I think federal government can continue funding the way they are funding it. What they need now is to go back to the agreement, clear the backlogs and then design a sustainable funding mechanism, which is what we learn from what is happening in other countries of the world.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. And we're going to go back to Adesuwa in a minute, but I think it's your turn, Rabiu Kwan Kwase, to answer that question. If you become president of Nigeria, how will you resolve these perennial strikes by ASU?
Now, you see, the whole thing really goes around honesty, sincerity and credibility. There are so many people, not only in the ASU, who are asking a lot of questions. In our own case, we try and be as transparent as possible. We carry everybody along. And maybe you know, and I'm sure members of the ASU are aware, that even when I was governor of Colonel State, our branch of ASU was taking permission not to go on strike because they believe that whatever was required at that particular time, we were doing it. In fact, when I was going back the second time, the ASU, they had other universities, where our strike were concerned about the situation at that particular time, but we carried them along. Now, I like figures, but you see, some of these figures that government is putting, in our own opinion, they are government, many governments are not keeping their eyes. You do budget with trillions and trillions of naira, you keep your eyes away, some of them will disappear even before the money goes to the ministry. And these are some of the issues that are triggering a lot of mistrust by the ASU and other organizations. In our own case, we'll do whatever it takes, not only to do the budget, but to keep our eyes on the budget so that money goes down, so that everybody will get his own, will earn his salaries and allowances and of course, do what he or she needs to do. So we'll do whatever it takes really to put the money and not only that to keep our eyes on the money so that everybody benefits in the sector. And I can assure you that in our manifesto, all those issues raised by ASU were very much addressed, especially the issue of ensuring that these universities are upgraded, are improved, are taken to the best international practice before we start proliferating the other universities and other tertiary institutions across the country. So we're on the same page with ASU. If you look at our blueprint.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, Mr. Kwan Kwase. And I'm told that we're once again having those technical gremlins. They are attacking our systems and we're having difficulty connecting with Adesuwa Omoruwon in Abuja. But let me just say that we're doing this sequentially. So we've gone from poverty to education and now we're going to move on to healthcare. But before we move on to healthcare, let's complete that sequence on education. And I'm told that we have Adesuwa Omoruwon in Abuja. And it would be nice, Adesuwa, if you can hear me, to try and limit the questions of the panelists to issues about education so that when we finish, we will then move sequentially to the next topic, which is healthcare. Adesuwa.
Thank you very much, Charles. You've done half my job just now. And just to remind our audience that we do have a panel of interviewers, including our civil society partners and of course, 10 seasoned journalists here in our Abuja studios. And Charles, you are correct, the next panel member that would be asking the candidates a question is Professor Jidio For Adibe of the Centre for Democracy and Development, our major partner for the Sound Horse series. Please limit your question to education and please project when asking your question. Thank you.
Yeah, hello, good evening all. My question is, my question is about the crisis in the education sector. I think we tend to focus on the higher education and we tend to a crisis in the lower segment, the primary and secondary school, I mean, and secondary schools. It seems to me that the deterioration in our education system or the crisis is more pronounced there and the decline is proportional to the growth of privately owned schools. And if you, right now, there is hardly any elite that sends their children to the public schools. So what you have now is that the public school that feed the higher institutions of learning are in crisis. The quality is so low that what, when they feed the higher education system, the quality of the graduates themselves are also quite low. So my question is, how are you going to address the imbalance? Where, for example, people in Northsries, in private schools, in private schools pay higher tuition than postgraduate and graduate students in public owned universities? If you become the president, and I'm directing it to the three presidential candidates, if you become the president, how are you going to revert the decline in the public education system, especially at the lower levels?
I said that question to any particular candidate, so I will take the liberty of stepping in and directing that question to Waziri Atiku Abubaka of the People's Democratic Party.
Again, thank you very much. I still want to go back, you know, to the experience and performance of the PDP. We passed the law setting up the universal basic education scheme where we made it compulsory for every Nigerian child to be educated from primary to secondary school level, every Nigerian child. And also impose education tax on some segment of Nigerian, you know, population or economy. We pass the entire proceeds of that taxation to the states and local governments. I think we should begin to see, or we should begin to find out, why is it not, we have not got the impact that that legislation was meant to achieve? Where did we go wrong? But I believe, you know, with that education tax law and with the funding given to the states and local governments, we should have been able to do better than we have done.
Right, okay. Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Abubaka. And let me come to you, Rabiu Kwan Kwase, with the same question.
Thank you very much. Well, he talked about crisis in education. I think the crisis is everywhere. It's not only in education. We have crisis in the economy. We have crisis in the security. We have crisis in infrastructure, agriculture and so on and so forth. But if we go for the education, our administration believe that the best way to go is to support education massively as much as the government can be able to do. And not only that, we carry our brothers and sisters at the state and of course, at local government level, bearing in mind the constitutional provision of which, I mean, what those levels of government are supposed to do. So we'll work harmoniously. We put in a lot of resources. We bring in a lot of reforms. We ensure that issue of corruption is being tackled because that is the main, main problem in almost all the sectors today, in all the areas, everywhere, not only in the sector of education. I remember not this visit where we went France and America, the other time when I traveled out of this country to the United Kingdom, I was really shocked at the airport, how people were following us, literally asking us that we had to give them money and so on. That is aviation, not education. So these are the areas that every responsible government must tackle to ensure effectiveness of the sectors, especially the area of education.
Thank you very much indeed. And before we return to Abuja and to Adesuwa Omoruwon, let me give you the opportunity, Mr. Peter B., to answer the same question.
Well, like I said at my introduction message, education is among the three measurement of HDI is most critical because as I say, it's the driver of the other ones. And when you talk about the education, you talk about basic education. And when we say our education is in crisis today, it is that basic education. Even when you talk about out of school children in the north, the 20 million out of school children, which 60%, if you look at it, is women, which we need to deal with urgently in order to bring that sector back to. What you need to do apart from having increased investment, like I said, in education, is also have increased supervision and ensuring that the resources are well utilized, working in partnership with the states and local governments. Because when you talk about out of school children in the north, these are children who have learned Quran. If they can learn Quran, that means they're intelligent. I will meet them at where they are learning Quran and teach them skill. With that, you'll be able to, and so what we are going to do in education, I can tell anybody, go and see what we did with the primary school and secondary schools in Anambra State. In fact, in Anambra State, people prefer to put their children in public school rather than private school. I want to, let me use my secondary school, Kazi King College. People queue up now to be able to go, be admitted there.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Peter B. And if Abuja is ready, we will return to my colleague, Adesuwa Omoruwon there. I think we're still dealing with issues, the stark issues to do with education in this country. But obviously, Adesuwa, if your panelists have done with that, feel free to move on to the next topic, which is healthcare. Adesuwa.
Well, thank you, Charles. Just one more question from our panelists on education. And here is the editor for the sun, Iheanacho Osu for that question.
My question is directed at the contestants. You talked about, we've not addressed the main issue that we are facing today, which is abduction of students. Schools are no longer safe. People go to school and will not return to their homes. Teachers go to schools and will not return to their homes. How would you address this challenge? God, we've seen it is happening in universities, it is happening in nursery schools, it is happening in secondary schools. How do you address this?
I said at any particular candidate, so let me take the liberty of directing that question to Atiku Abubaka first.
Well, basically, the question here is talking about the security of pupils as well as also teachers. We have all agreed here, everybody, the three of us have agreed that the issue of security is paramount. Whether it is in education, whether it is in business, whether it is in agriculture, in every facet of our life, fundamentally, there must be a security. So we all agree. But how are we going to resolve the security issue first? Many of us have said we need to increase the number of policemen and equip them and train them as well as other security services in the country. I think it's a consensus amongst all of us. So I think these are the things that we need to do to tackle the security. And that's why for me, you know, I have a five-point program and security is one of the programs that I said I'm going to tackle if I have the opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. And let me come to you, Rabiu Kwan Kwase, with the same question.
You see, the issue of insecurity is not only peculiar to schools. There is everywhere. You can't move from Abuja to Kaduna, Brennangwari, you have many issues, northeast, you have issues and many other states, especially in the northwest where I come from, Sokoto, Kebbi, Zamfara, Kasina, even Kanu and Jagawa, we have issues that must be tackled. And that was why we agreed in our party that we have to escalate the number of the security agencies. We need special training and retraining. We need special equipments, arms, ammunition and so on to ensure that every square meter of this country is being secured. So security is key and that's why really we have to carry our people for necessary intelligence to ensure that we have information from every corner, every point of this country because security cannot function effectively without the intelligence. And of course, we will use technology so that we can identify people who should be taken to courts and so on and so forth. So security is key. Without it, all other areas, not only Without it, all other areas, not only education, but even the economy, the infrastructure, and everything will certainly go bad.
Thank you very much indeed. And Mr. Pito B, just to reiterate that these are issues that are further threatening education in this country. People have to have the confidence to be able to send their children to school knowing that they'll be safe. What would you do to secure schools in this country?
Well, issue of security goes far beyond schools. Today, we have issues with food security because our farmers can't go to farms. The sending goes all over, there's issue of insecurity, is to, again, see how we can review and restructure our entire security architecture, which includes increasing the number of personnel, equipping them and training them properly, having a multi-level policing on the police side, local government to state, national level, as well as aggressively and simultaneously pulling people out of poverty. Because this poverty, they have a lot to do with this. So if you don't deal with the economy and tackle it simultaneously as you're tackling the security, you're going to still have the same problem. You can't have 3% unemployment in a country of over 200 million people, and you will have crisis. We just said that 1,000, 3 million people live under poverty, you're going to have crisis. You need to start reducing that number. That is what you need to do in order to secure the country.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Pito B. And let me make a crucial point here, which is that the audience, both in Nigeria and internationally, are very keen to know how the candidates and their parties are going to do things differently from the governing APC party if they came into office. So it's not just about identifying the problems, it's about the solutions, but how those solutions are going to differ from what the government is doing right now. And let's turn to the crucial issue of healthcare. We're in a country where millions have little access to affordable healthcare and horrific stories abound about the lack of proper treatment. Meanwhile, thousands of wealthy Nigerians fly out of this country in search of medical care with billions of dollars lost to medical tourism every year. Clearly, medical tourism is a major problem with such a large amount of foreign exchange leaving Nigeria, money that could have been converted to gains for the country if it had a vibrant healthcare system. Attiku Abubaka, how will you resolve the issue of medical tourism? You've got two minutes.
Thank you very much, Charles. First and foremost, let's deal with medical challenges at the lower level. Basically, what is required is basic health centers to cater for the greater population, you know, of, of our people. I think this is why we need to focus as far as the general population is, is concerned. And I think we are not investing enough as a government as far as that aspect is concerned. And the second level is the medical tourism. You are talking about which thousands of Nigerians go out to receive. Here, we really need to sit down with the private sector and say, look, we want you to invest in healthcare, and we are prepared to give you incentives. What type of incentives do you want? It requires a dialogue with the private sector because, basically, it is even those who go outside, they don't go to public hospitals, they go to private hospitals. So if we give the private sector the incentives they need to build hospitals tax-free, this free, this free, this free, that free, for a number of years until you recover your investment and you make profit, I believe the private sector is going to come up. Nigeria's private sector is a very, very, you know, active sector in this country.
Thank you very much indeed. And Rabiu Kwanquaso, millions have little access to affordable healthcare in Nigeria. Meanwhile, medical tourism is thriving. How would you resolve that issue?
Well, directly to medical tourism, I believe there are two things to be done. One, we need to put our house in order. We have to improve as government our facilities, all the our health facilities at the university level and so on. We have to do whatever we can to provide all what it takes to conform with the international best practice, to help build the confidence in those health centers and, of course, teaching hospitals. We encourage, say, on the same side, encourage the private people who have got interest in establishing hospitals, give them all the incentives to do it, to do the, to establish the hospitals. But on the other hand, I think leaders should lead from the front, not from the back. You see, this idea that our leaders developed over the years, that even when they have malaria, they will travel abroad. Some of them have even chosen particular countries, some have chosen Britain, some have chosen France, some have chosen Dubai, and so on and so forth. That shouldn't be acceptable. We have to come and build confidence. And that's why if you are always going there for to your doctors and so on, you are PA, you are minister, everybody will do the same, will copy from you. And that's why I personally decided that whatever investment I have is in this country, I don't have one single account anywhere in the world, except in Nigeria. I don't have any house or any business anywhere because I want to build confidence for each and every person, especially those who believe in us. So I think we have to tackle it from the two sides. As long as our leaders will continue to go out for their medication and so on, even with the slightest health issues, then everybody will do the same. Business people will do it, civil servants will do it, everybody will do it because the leader is doing the same. And I think these are things that we have to tackle from both sides, the quality of our facilities. And of course, the leaders must lead by example.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Kwanquaso. And let me come to you, Pito B, of the Labour Party. Terrible, horrible stories about the lack of proper treatment in Nigeria, the poor who constitute the majority in this country having to deal with whatever medical facilities they can get their hands on whilst the rich are traveling out of the country on medical tourism. How would you resolve that issue?
The first thing you need to do is issue of primary healthcare because that is the basics. And that, dealing with that, first, you need to increase the investment we have today in healthcare. Again, let me look, give you an analysis. Like I said, in education, it's very low. Our total budget in the past six years for health is about 2 trillion, 250 billion naira. That is totally, for a country of 200 million people, that's totally unacceptable. Essentially, when you come, you need to deal with issue of primary healthcare and essentially in the north, where we now have, you know, now we've passed India, a country of 1.4 billion in infant mortality. And the reason why we passed them is because of the situation we find ourselves in the north. Because of not investing in education and learning training, we can't get the pregnant women and everything to follow, going to hospitals, going to this. So we need to invest in primary healthcare, first, increase funding, invest in primary healthcare, invest in training the manpower. There's no reason why we should not have, especially now, nurses and midwives and these that all over the world. There's no reason why I should not have school of nursing or midway free in every local government and be able to train the manpower that is required for this and all that, for the, what I can call the secondary medical care. What you need is insurance. We need to find insurance like other countries, big countries like us have done it. Example is what is happening in Indonesia, there are about 200, it's something million. We can copy what they are doing. There's a way they structure their insurance that the rich can pay, the poor can pay, everything cumulatively, everybody have a healthcare which is covered.
Thank you very much indeed, and thank you to all three of you. And let's cross over to Abuja and my colleague, Adesuwa Omorun, who I believe has some questions with regard to healthcare. Adesuwa.
Indeed, Charles, but permit me to please, at this point, say a very big thank you to our audience at home, wherever in the world you are watching the Town Hall series by Arise News tonight. We are being told that at the moment we have over 8,500 livestream viewers on YouTube and on Facebook, over 4,700 people are watching from across the globe. Dear candidates, my question to you on healthcare, it is believed that Nigerian leaders do not have faith in Nigeria healthcare system and so they abandon it. Can you pledge today to Nigerians watching from around the globe that you would be transparent, one, with your healthcare status? Pledge to Nigerians that you will prioritize the healthcare system in the country and perhaps use them? I'd like to begin with the candidate of the NNPP because you spoke about leaders abandoning the healthcare in Nigeria. Can you pledge to Nigerians tonight that you will be transparent with your healthcare, your healthcare status and, of course, use Nigeria healthcare facilities?
You see, once you are aspiring to lead people, people have got responsibility really to know whether you are the best or you are the right person to lead. And the issue of health is very, very important. And I think these are some of the things that this country in particular, based on our experiences of the past, that we need to look at very critically. We have seen cases in the past where people who, under normal circumstance, shouldn't shoulder that responsibility, even if it is because of themselves and their families. But unfortunately, for many obvious reasons, they decided to go for it. And the consequences is there for all of us to remember. So I can assure you that I'm so happy with my health status, and I can assure you that the last medical exam that I had, somebody there, according to the outcome of the results, gave me a guarantee of 30 years. And if you want to see it, I can give you.
Let me go to the candidate of the People's Democratic Party, Mr. Attiku Abubaka. Would you be transparent with your health status with Nigerians and would you use Nigerian healthcare facilities?
If I am required to produce my health status, I will do so. I have it. I have it.
And would you use Nigerian healthcare facilities?
I have it.
And would you use?
The Nigerian health facilities that caters for my health may not be available. You know that we have limitations. We have been talking about those limitations.
Mr. Pito B of the Labour Party, your response to my question? Mr. Pito B of the?
Well, I believe that it is actually required that those who are aspiring to lead should be able to make available and openly their medical and health status to the public. And two, I have served as a governor. If you go ask if I was serving as a governor, I substituted some facilities and I used them, and I still use them today. But I believe that if there's issue of referral from them to anybody beyond here, that is a referral from them that they cannot do it because it happens everywhere in the world. I will not say everybody must be restricted here if there is. From my own position, I use the facilities there and I believe in them, and I can tell you they're very competent. All we need is to support it. I've said how we can use insurance to show that everybody can be careful.
Thank you, candidate. I do have some questions from the panelists. First, I do have some questions from? Adepega of the Punch. Please limit your questions on the focus, which is healthcare.
Nigerian experts are leaving the country in droves. Many doctors, many nurses are leaving Nigeria because of the current situation. I'd like to know what specific policy will you put in place to rebrand the health system and also encourage those who have left to come back and partake in Nigeria? Also, what percentage of the budget will you dedicate to the health sector if you win the election? Thank you.
Thank you. And very quickly to Mr. Sunny Daniel of the Vanguard.
I put the question to the three candidates and they should answer. The healthcare system in Nigeria is extremely expensive to the point that the average Nigerian family cannot access, can't afford. And this has created a lot of problems, leading to avoidable deaths, pains, and frustrations. What will you do as a president to ensure that care delivery is not only readily available, but accessible and affordable to the majority of Nigerians?
Right, I don't know if you got that question, but let me come to you. I did that for, to ease the tension in the room. Let me come to you, Mr. Attiku Abubaka, to answer that.
First of all, we were the first government to set up national health insurance scheme. And what we need to do is to look at the national health insurance scheme and see, is it accessible to the majority of Nigerians? And is it also affordable? These are two major issues that we need to. But we have a national health insurance scheme, which we established in this country, which is supposed to cater for every Nigerian. But unfortunately, because of our level of education and lack of enlightenment, not many Nigerians subscribe to the national insurance scheme. But we have, we were the first government to set it up, and it still exists and it works. All what we need to do is that, why is it not covering the majority of the population of this country? From rural to semi-urban to urban and also to, 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 to cities. But we have a national insurance scheme.
Okay, let me turn to you, Mr. Kwanquaso, the same question.
Thank you very much. Now, the issue of health insurance is very important and very critical, especially at this moment when Nigerians are finding it even very difficult to eat. Insurance scheme is so important that not only government should set it up, but it should be looked into. We are going to bring a lot of reforms to strengthen the health insurance in this country so that as many people as possible can benefit from that. If possible, we make it almost everybody going to the hospital with unnecessarily, necessarily carrying money with them. And that's when we also thought of these accidents and people going to the hospital as a result of either the accident or other sources where police must be consulted before they are treated. All those things were being very much tackled by our blueprint. Now, the issue of healthcare cost, it is very important that we make it accessible for each and every Nigerian to be treated in our hospital through the insurance and, of course, through provision in our hospitals whereby people, even without insurance, can easily be treated in our hospitals. And I believe that's the only way we can help our people, especially the masses, who are the vast majority in this country. In this case, we are even? we are even talking of 133 million people who are below poverty line, as been mentioned earlier on in this program. On the issue of brain drain, our policy should be to train as many Nigerians as possible. Of course, we'll encourage people, especially specialists, people who have socialities in some areas, to come back and work for our country. But of course, we'll continue to encourage Nigerians and train them, so that they can work in the Nigerian market and also if they have opportunity to go out of the country, they will be free to do so. That was why even my nursing school and midwifery in Kano, we try as much as possible to teach them some international languages, so that they can go out and become international young men and women. And that's why we even trained pilots and so on. And we appeal to all those whose aircrafts in this country to patronize Nigerians, because that's the only way you can have people at work.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Kwanqueso. And Mr. Peter Obi, the same question goes to you.
Well, let me start with the issue of brain drain. I've always said it will be brain gain. If you go, there was a time the Indians, all the doctors were living to the Western world and everything. You go to the UK now, everywhere is Indian doctor. But then I have a brain gain. It's all those people who left, who are coming back and everything. The idea is to do massive training of doctors, nurses, and everything, those who can leave, who can stay here. But the most important is that you need to increase the investment in the healthcare sector. Like I said before, it is too low, it's unacceptable. You need to have at least 10% of your budget. The overall budget is already low, but if I have opportunity of explaining how I'm going to increase the budget, I have at least 10%. Today, look at it, 10 years, if I just show you, six years, our total budget is 2 trillion 247 billion. Just call it to about 2.3. So that is a one-year budget for this size of this country. It won't even be enough. And I make sure that it's properly invested. When you come to issue of insurance, the way you structure is that government will also contribute. These are areas where you have to do subsidy, not in petroleum consumption. There's areas where government do subsidy, and it's in productive and development areas that are critical, like health, education, fighting poverty. These are areas you need to invest. So there's need to be a physical package to support this, in order to support the insurance and everything, which will allow them to treat from high to low. It's been done in Indonesia, it's been done partly in India, can show you big nations that are practicing it. We don't need to invent the wheel, we just have to learn what is being practiced somewhere and do the same thing.
Thank you very much indeed. And thank you to all three candidates for answering those questions that were coming to us from Abuja. And before we return again to Abuja, I think it's time to change the sequence of questions. So we're going to move to the next sequence, which is the issue of human capital. And of course, human capital is all about the knowledge skills that people accumulate throughout their lives and which helps them to realize their potential as productive members of society. Examples of human capital include communication skills, education, technical skills, creativity, experience, problem-solving skills, mental health, and personal resilience. Therefore, investment in human capital is obviously important because it helps citizens provide even greater value to their country and can help develop the economy. In a country such as Nigeria, where there are vast differences in skill set and knowledge, how do you aim, Atiku Abubaka, to ensure human capital growth and to ensure that all Nigerian lives matter in this regard?
Charles, here we go again. Human capital, as you mentioned, is driven by a number of factors which you enumerated. And these, all these factors center around education. Whether it is technical education, whether it is any other form of education, it centers around education. This requires investment in both technical education and other allied, you know, subjects related to information technology, and also other aspects of education. So I think, again, here we go, we have to invest in human capital development by making sure that we invest more in education.
Thank you very much indeed. Very succinct and straight to the point. And to you, Rabiu Kwanqueso, what is your plan for human capital growth to ensure that all Nigerian lives matter in this regard?
Thank you very much, Charles. At this point, let me take this opportunity to thank our great country, Nigeria, for giving me a lot of opportunities to be where I am today. I am one of those who had opportunity from my primary in those days to go to Bodum Primary School in Guarzo, Craft School, Technical School, Polytechnics, and universities. And I'm so happy that I got all what I needed in the education. I had opportunity to have PhD and fellow Nigerian Society of Engineers. I'm so grateful to this country. And that's why I have never joked with the issue of education. That was why education was free in Kano. We are providing meals in our primary schools, we are providing two sets of uniforms to encourage students to go to school. We established two universities, one in 2000 and one, the other one in 2012. And we established 26 institutes in Kano in just four years. We sent over 3,000 young men and women who were resident in Kano to 13, I mean to 14 countries across the world. We selected institutes, I mean universities in Nigeria, private universities. We sent 412 to our university, Alkalam University in Kasina State. We sent 300 to Bels University, 300 to Ibnidian, 200 to Christent University. We sent 25 to Abti in Adamawa. I'm sure His Excellency will remember. So we did all what we could. In fact, at a stage, we couldn't find enough people of Kano origin, I mean not origin, residents to go to our universities in Kano. When I was governor, it went to the level that there was no single person in Kano state who had university qualification or any tertiary education without getting an admission. And coincidentally...
You're on the side of someone, finish your sentence.
I'm just trying to show you that it's something that we very much appreciate. And we believe that by the grace of God, when we have the opportunity, Nigerians will be allowed, will be given the opportunity, not minding their social status, not minding where they come from, or ethnicity, or their religion. We'll do whatever it takes to have people being properly educated. Because I'm so happy with myself, in 30 years, I have been to almost everywhere. I have never been found wanting in terms of capacity, in terms of honesty, and so on, simply because, or mainly because of education.
Thank you very much indeed. And Mr. Peter Obi, human capital growth, how are you going to deal with that expanded in Nigeria?
Well, in my opening address, I did say that human capital encompasses health and education. And the consequence of it being low in Nigeria is the mass poverty you're seeing. Because the more you invest in human capital, the better your development. So human capital first, I want to should be, it's not an expense, it's an investment. Because that's what drives your development, in the first place. If you invest in it, you increase per capita, which is the real measure of poverty. So for me, we're going to, I've said that even if we're going to borrow money, we're going to borrow for investments. And I can show through a budget that I intend to deal with this issue in clear terms that are measurable, and people can see it. So when we say we're going to pull people out of poverty, we're going to state the numbers, and people will see the country increase. And even if they have opportunity, I'll show you using three countries to show you what they did with issue of human capital, how they moved their countries' HDI from low to medium to high, and how dramatically increased their per capita, which is a measure of wealth. And the same thing for Nigeria, who didn't invest, it took the other way around. And that's why you've thrown more people into poverty, where you now have more people living in multi-dimensional poverty than a country like India, that is seven times your size, and you have more people living in poverty. And use what they've done, and examples abound. China, India, Vietnam have done this in a, something that is, with effortless, is in pulling, not that it's difficult, but they've been able to show example, how you can use methods to pull your people, by investing in human capital.
Thank you very much indeed. And we're still on the issue of human capital. Let me throw to my colleague in Abuja, Adesuwa Omorewan. Adesuwa.
Again, Charles. Dear candidate, you cannot talk about developing human capital development in the absence of an inclusive society. My question to you, how do you ensure an inclusive society? And how do you fund these developmental projects you talk about? Should you become the next president in 2023, you would be inheriting a huge budget deficit. Begin with the candidate of the People's Democratic Party, Atiku Abubaka.
Yes, we are going to inherit a huge fiscal deficit. One way we can go about reducing that deficit is to remove areas of wastages in government spending. Another area we can also remove these wastages is also to make sure that we continue with the policies we had started. For instance, we started removing subsidies when we were in office. We were to remove subsidies in four quarters. We removed in two quarters. After we left, the whole thing froze. Nobody had the courage and the leadership to continue with removing subsidies again. This is one aspect where we could raise a lot of funding to meet the gap, you know, in our expenditure. The second one, of course, is to continue with the privatization which we had started. We realized quite a lot of money. For instance, take the case of Maori-born refineries. They have not been working, and we have been expending a lot of money on them. Why not privatize them and raise so much money to meet up this deficit? These are areas, a number of areas, you can implement and make sure that you raise the necessary funding that you require. Of course, I have mentioned areas of wastages, which can be reduced as far as the federal funding is concerned. So these are the three areas I believe we could get funding to reduce the deficit. And also, another area is to make sure that the central bank, you know, eliminates multiple, you know, exchange rates in our exchange rates regime. Because that, again, is another area where we can also raise funding.
Mr. Peter Obi of the Labour Party?
Thank you. Well, every country of the world owns. So first is that the incoming government is going to face huge debts, which you need to sit down and restructure in order to make it manageable. And then go ahead to bring, restore physical viability by one, dealing with issue of oil theft, the criminal subsidy we have today, they would issue of multiple exchange rates, like His Excellency, Atiku Abubaka, has mentioned, they would that issue, they would issue of subsidies and areas of waivers and everything, and cut unacceptable cost of governance that we have today. By the time you deal with all this, you will be able to have a situation where you now have to have what you can call an implementable budget, because you now borrow money for investment. And by doing that, you have to bring in growth. And as you grow, you might, in fact, be able to create more space to be able to borrow more, to be able to invest more. And these are high countries who grow. And with this investment in human capital, your economy will grow, more people will be pulled out of poverty, there will be more taxes, there will be more income and everything, and you then start reducing your deficit and your debt.
Candidate of the NNPP?
We will do whatever it takes to ensure that we have an inclusive government. Things should be run through merit rather than whatever things that will not help the country. Now, on the issue of budget, I'm happy to say that when I went to Kano in 2011, by second term, the capital was 30%, and of course, the current was 70. And before I left the government, we were able to reverse it to 70, 30. And I'm also happy to say that because of the fiscal discipline that we had by way of attacking corruption and so on, we were able to run our government first term in 2019, 2003, and 2011 to 2015 without borrowing a single quabu. Unfortunately, of course, at that time, we inherited debt that we had to pay. So twice I was living government house in Kano, twice I was paying all the debt that I inherited as a government. Now, at national level, we were told that there are serious issues now to the extent that now whatever we earn cannot even service the debt. Now, let me say that it is our intention to sit down with the creditors to renegotiate and ensure that we are given breathing space to start the government in the first place. And secondly, we look at all areas of income, especially now that our oil, which is the main source of income, is being reduced from 2.2 million barrels that were given by OPEC, the allocation by OPEC, now to about 1 million barrels. And that's why the issue of security comes in. We'll protect our assets, we'll make sure that we have enough resources coming in. We want to make sure that whatever we are spending is going to be a real value for money. We will not allow people to be taking our resources at the source or at the treasury.
Thank you very much indeed. And thank you exceedingly to the three of you. We've just got a few minutes left, you'll be glad to know. And you could all go home and enjoy a drink. But before we go, we're giving you three minutes to wrap up for us. Tie all the loose ends together and justify to Nigerians why you should be voted for as president of this country and not your opponent. And I'm going to start with you, Mr. Peter Obi.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. Mine is, again, talk about the issues we're talking this night. Because that is the issue of foundation of our country. First is to secure, unite the country, ensure that if government that is going to come into 2023 is a government of national unity, that will bring in the best in terms of character and competence, irrespective of whether they support you or they don't support you, in order to save our country. Because we have an existential situation, a situation where we have this huge number of people that are living in poverty, which you need to stop. of people that are living in poverty, which you need to start pulling out. Our country has not failed in the past, call it several years. And you can use other countries to show, I'll just use a country to show you how badly it was done in a matter of past few years. And that country is Bangladesh. Bangladesh, if you look at the World Bank source, in 2010, Nigeria had a per capita of $2,280, Bangladesh was $781. By 2015, Nigeria was about 2,600, Bangladesh was 1,247 dollars. Today, Nigeria is 2,058 dollars, where Bangladesh is 2,500 dollars. Look at where we are, there were one third of our per capita in 2010. And now, they have almost tripled it and our own has gone down by about 20%. That is what we need to deal with. We need to deal with issues we discussed this night, invest in health, in education, in pulling people out of poverty by supporting small, micro, small businesses genuinely, investing in productive section. Nigeria is not a productive country and it has to be productive. If you look at our last quarter, just to conclude, in our last quarter, our GDP growth was 2,25%. Our money supply was about 13%. And that is, look at it, what is inflation, where your money supply is more than your go, so you don't even have growth to be able to, for the money you're printing and throwing to the system. We need to move the country from consumption to product. Once it becomes productive, it will create labor and be able to employ people. And that's what I'm going to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. And let me come to you, Rabiu Kwanquaso, the presidential candidate of the NNPP.
Thank you very much, Charles. I'm happy to say that almost everything is working in my favor, ranging from the issue of education, which I mentioned earlier on, from craft school to technical school to polytechnics to universities, I was able to reach the peak. And also in terms of my career, I was a civil servant in Kano for 70 years, and I know the meaning of civil service because I was one. I retired as a principal water engineer in Kano State from an artisan that I was being employed by the same ministry. In terms of politics, I was in the House of Reps, Deputy Speaker of the House of Reps. I was also in the Constitutional Conference that we had opportunity to draft the 1999 Constitution. I was also governor of Kano in 2019, 1999 to 2003. And of course, I was Minister of Defence and of course, advisor to President under Fulan Somalia from 2003 to 2007. I was also in the NDDC, and I'm sure you know, I left NDDC because of what was happening there. And I was also back to Kano in 2011 to 2015, and I was Senator of the Federal Republic of Nigeria in 2015 to 2019. The idea of mentioning all this is to say that the National Assembly, I believe, will be comfortable with Rabiu Kwanquaso because I've been part of them, the civil servant, the same thing. Of course, the security of this country, being a member of the extended family of the security in this country, have a lot of respect for them and they have a lot of respect for me. And I believe they will be happy with me as their Commander in Chief. And I have been to NDDC to know the issues in the NDDC, the problems. In fact, it was the issues that I had to live and given the opportunity. We look at the issues of the NDDC, ranging from pollution, education, agriculture and so on and so forth, and of course, the infrastructure that we have there. So in essence, I'm so happy that I've been to almost everywhere and strong enough to be the president of this country at this moment in time. And I'm happy, like I said, the issue of health, the age and everything is working on my side. And I believe that together with Nigerians, we are going to make Nigeria a better place for each and every Nigerian, not minding his religious or ethnic or regional or whatever leaning that he has. And we have done it in the past and by the grace of God, given the opportunity, we are going to work with all Nigerians to make Nigeria a greater place so that we can take the leadership of Africa and of course, ensure that everybody lives in peace across the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Kwanquaso. And let me come to you, Atiku Abubakar, the presidential candidate of the PDP. In three minutes, can you tell us why you should be voted for and not your opponent?
These are the reasons. One, I started as a civil servant of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. So when you come to the issue of civil service or bureaucracy, I have an experience of 20 years. And thereafter, I began my political career to fight the military, to get out of government. In other words, fight for democracy. In the fight for democracy, I have gone through a lot of challenges, assassination attempts, going into exile and so on and so forth. Came back, continued the struggle and was elected governor of my state. And because of my contributions to the party, I was nominated as a vice president and we won. And I believe since the return of democracy in this country, the party to which we formed and I belong performed wonderfully well. Up till now, there is no other government that has performed as well as we have performed between 1999 and 2015. And with that experience as vice president, I believe Nigerians cannot afford to hand over or to elect any governor or to elect any person who has less experience than I have got. And when you come to the issue of business in the private sector, I have been involved in the business in the private sector, from oil logistics to manufacturing to agriculture. So again, you cannot find me wanting as far as those sectors of the economy are concerned. So I believe that Nigerians should compare our government and the current government and see which served this country better. We achieved tremendous economic success in this country and we achieved unity. That's why at the beginning, I made a pledge to tackle five issues, one of which is to unify this country, because this country has never seen the kind of division we now have. And I said, unity will be my number one priority, followed by security. What do I mean by unity? I mean making every part of this country to have a sense of belonging and governance. And then, of course, security, I pledged to tackle education, I pledged to tackle economy, we have, we had achieved tremendous economic success. I pledged to continue with that. And also, finally, to restructure the country, because there has been consistent agitation for the restructuring of this country. And I pledge, I'm going to implement it if I have the opportunity to be elected as president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed, His Excellency Waziri Atiku Abubakar of the People's Democratic Party, His Excellency Rabiu Musa Kwanquaso of the New Nigeria People's Party, and His Excellency Peter Obe of the Labour Party. We thank you all for making time to honor the Nigerian media, for taking part in this town hall. As you can see, this is a collaboration with not just Arise News, but with other civil society organizations and other media houses. We thank you for responding to our questions and not jetting out of the country and being here to answer the Nigerian call, demonstrating that charity begins at home. We invited Bola Tinubu of the APC and he declined to attend. We hope next time he will find time to honor the call of the media, without it having to be a Arise News, it can be any media house. The next Town Hall series will continue next week as we invite more candidates to respond to the topics discussed today. Thank you to the audience as well, those in Abuja and in Lagos attending this Town Hall. And I would like to say it's been a pleasure hosting this event along with my colleague, Adesuwa Omoruan, who will sign off from Abuja. Adesuwa.
Indeed, Charles, and our audience from home, wherever in the world you have watched, thank you so much. Let me just say that our team of fact checkers from Premium Times were working all through this Town Hall series and they will be publishing their findings very soon. I am Adesuwa Omoruan. Have a very good night. Thank you.